2021, it's the first time we've all been together for quite a while. So, we can introduce ourselves, and I'll start with Fidelis.
Fidelis Omobreka.
Tom Earls.
Diane Giappasso.
Liz Banks.
Marge Cooney.
Mike Young.
David Zonia.
Yes, and David Zonia is our newest member of the zoning board of appeals.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We can start by the minutes from Wednesday, April 21st. I have a correction. On page two, the, on E, the second paragraph of, oh, sorry. One, two, three, four. When it talks about, "The board discussed the dimensions and foundation of the shed. The dimensions would be staying the same, and the shed would not have a foundation, but we'd be suspended on, add on peers."
Didn't read the notice. Didn't read the notice. You didn't read the notice?
Do I have to do that first?
Because we're still virtual for the public. Sorry.
Go ahead, Jean.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. "Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The board members are present in the meeting room this evening. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at https://www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator/pages/how-access-virtual-meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455 and enter 1428 for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting."
Thank you.
And I forgot to start recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
We're a little off.
All right, so any other?
I do. On page three of the minutes, in the motion, I think we need to add, as shown on the plan entitled "Proposed Site Plan," Jesse and Jennifer Cassibon, prepared by Jalbert Engineering, Plan Date 3/16/2021, DWG number 2101. As a proposal, does not intensify or create additional nonconformings, and the applicant may apply for a building permit. I really think we have to have the plan in there.
Yes, I agree. I agree. All right. Anybody else have any corrections or comments?
I'll make a motion as amended.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended?
Unanimous and one extension. One extension.
You weren't at the meeting, so you have to abstain. Okay. All right. We have to open.
Liz, can I just check for a minute and see if this is Lenny? Lenny Jalbert, is that you that called in?
That's me. I'm here listening.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll edit your name here. Okay.
Want me to read the public hearing notice?
Do you have it?
Yeah, I have the public hearing notice here. Yeah, okay. You ready for that?
Yes.
Okay. "In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Subchapter 11, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing virtually on Wednesday, May 19th, 2021, at 6:35 PM on the application of Dale A. Perry. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05, and Chapter 24, Section 24.09A through E of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming structure or use for the property located at 59 Bennett's Road. The applicant is proposing to raise and rebuild the existing residential structure. The proposed new single-family home will be placed at the same rear and side setbacks; however, the front setback will be more nonconforming with an 11-foot-point-three-inch front setback proposed versus the existing 14.7 setback. The zoning board may elect, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Chapter 30A, Subchapter 20, to hold the public hearing virtually, in which case details respecting the same will be made public by the zoning board of appeals in advance of the hearing and will be posted here at the sterbridge.gov-townadministrator webpage for virtual access. For those unable to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. The proposed request can be viewed at the sterbridge.gov-zoningboardofappeals webpage's recent filings site and can be made to view the application and plan by contacting the Sterbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508 or by email at jlacy@sterbridge.gov."
Thank you, Michael. We did receive correspondence from the town planner, the Board of Health, the Fire Department, Conservation Commission, and the Department of Public Works. So, you may make your presentation.
Lenny, you can go ahead and make your presentation. We have your plan up on the screen now.
Okay, thank you. Lenny Jalbert, representing the Dale A. Perry plan, as shown on drawing number 21001 dated 03/21. What we're proposing to do is to take and raise the existing structure and actually rebuild the new structure on the property itself immediately adjacent to Lead Mine Pond. What it is, is we've endeavored to keep the setback requirements to the house located on the northerly side roughly at 18.8 feet and the southerly side roughly at 10.2, which is consistent with the existing structures on the property itself. The variance that we did, that is different than what is shown on the plan, is that the house originally was 14.7 feet from the street, and we changed it to 11.3. The reason we did that is because of the Conservation Commission regulation under the fact that within 25 feet, no build would be done, and we had to move the building to step back within the 25 feet from the lake itself. So, basically, what happened, we have done that, we've submitted it to the Conservation Commission. We had a hearing on it within the first Tuesday of this month. However, it was continued on the fact that no DEP file number was issued. However, at the meeting, there were absolutely no concerns relative to the positioning of the house or the site for conservation, and we feel that the permit from Conservation will be imminent as soon as we have the next meeting with the DEP file number. So, I've got no complaints there. There's actually two issues on the site itself that took place. One was the well-positioning. The other was the septic system position. The fact of the matter is the well and the septic system are both nonconforming as per state code and require a public hearing and a variance from the Board of Health for the well location and the septic system location. This will be done as soon as the Board of Health schedules a hearing for this, which we will have to go in for a special permit for both. Because of it, I recommend that if the board finds that this condition of the house is non-detrimental to the existing structure, that it's not going to enhance or deter from the actual destruction, and they vote in the affirmative to allow it, I'd say then make a contingency that the construction of the house would be buildable based on a special permit for the well installation and the septic system installation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. You have a question, Marge?
Yes, I would like to know when you're scheduled for the next conservation meeting. Is it the next one coming up?
Yes, the next one coming up in May. June, excuse me, yes.
In June.
June 19th.
June 19th?
Yep. Yep.
Another comment on the plan where you show the required sizes, you know, the lot size area and all, it shows the zone as agricultural. It's rural residential, so that should be annotated and changed.
Okay. Okay, what happens if you look at the drawing 21001, the actual area encompasses it with a rural residential zone, which is on the area shown within the chart, okay? The agricultural zone would actually be beyond that limit of the lake itself.
But it should be rural residential. The location.
It is rural residential. It is rural residential. If you look at the plan 1001, it states rural residential.
Yeah, well, it should be annotated on the chart.
Okay.
No. That plan may be on, on the one we have.
Yeah, I see that. There is a note that says zoning agricultural.
That's right.
Right, it says agricultural online.
Yes.
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at? Which revision number?
Number three.
It has it on all of them, on the original one and also on the revision. Yeah, the revision date is on the other side.
I'm sorry, Marge, can I walk up there so you can show me? I'm seeing it.
Like I said, you might have something different than what I have.
Oh, down there, okay.
It's on both, even on the revision sheet.
Oh, yeah, okay. Got it. Okay, I'll show Lenny where that is if he doesn't notice it and have him update that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any more questions?
I'll see.
Diane, do you have any questions?
I don't think so, no.
Well, you got to know if you get.
I'm looking for the location of the well that's in question with respect to the sewer system. It's a neighbor's well.
The neighbor's well actually is, from there, is actually 51.4 feet from the leach field facility, which is subject to a special permit, and that's shown on the drawing, which is 2101.
Okay, I followed it. Thank you.
Revision four, okay?
Yep.
Anything else, Tom?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Fidelis?
No question.
Mike?
No questions.
David?
None.
I don't have any questions either. So. Anybody have any comments at home or watching?
Is there anyone on the public line that has any questions about this special permit? Liz, if I may, just, pardon me. If I may, I just have one comment. I had in my report that I was contacted by an abutter, the abutter that his well is in close proximity to the proposed septic design, and I provided him a copy of my report, and I discussed the procedure and let him know to, you know, check in with the Board of Health to see when the public hearing would be, and he said he wanted to make clear he had no concerns with the house at all. His only concern is, you know, following what's going on with the septic system near his well. So, I just wanted to let the board know that.
Right.
Oh, I have another question. There is a new septic system going in?
Yes. That's what would require the.
Yeah, no, I see that. But is that a Presby system going in?
Lenny, I don't know if you heard that, Marge is questioning the type of septic system?
The system is just a standard system going through.
It looked almost like a Presby system, that's what I was wondering.
Right, no, no, it isn't just a standard leach field with trenches, that's all it is.
Okay, thank you.
Also, just for your edification, I met Mr. Beal, who is the abutter that has the concern of the system on the road within the last week, and told him that by regulation I have to notify him by certified mail for the special permit for the system, and that I would be getting with him as soon as I hear from the Board of Health for a scheduled time, and he was aware, he's aware of the proceeding for that.
All right, thank you.
Any more comments or questions? All right, seeing none.
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, unanimous? And do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to find that the proposal by the applicant Dale A. Perry for property located at 59 Bennett's Road to raise and rebuild the single-family existing home as shown on house plans dated 2/19/21 by Trefone Design Associates, Inc., of Sturbridge, Mass. No change in rear and side setbacks, oh, however, the, all right, there's no change in the rear and side setbacks. The front setback, however, will go from 14.7 feet to 11.3 feet, which will make it a little more nonconforming, but will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing in accordance with Chapter 24, Section 24.09, A through E, and Section 20, Chapter 20, Section 20.05 of the Sturbridge zoning bylaws.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion for the findings? Marge? All right, unanimous?
Okay. And motion to grant a special permit requested to allow, as outlined in the application and documentation, provided as shown on soil, plan titled "Soil Absorption System Upgrade" for Dale Perry, prepared by Jalbert Engineering, Sturbridge, Mass., dated March 2nd, 21, Plan Number 21001, Revision Number Three, dated April 15, 21. If approved, which it is, all necessary permits must be obtained and all concerns must be addressed prior to any construction. So, that would include the conservation business and the Board of Health.
Okay, do you have a motion? Do you have a second? Tom? Any discussion? No? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you, Marge.
You're welcome.
All set, Lenny and Dale, thank you very much.
Enjoy it. Thank you very much, the board. Good night.
Thank you for the board for your time, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Next, we have. NBM Realty, request for extension of the comprehensive permit granted for 152 Main Street.
Yes, I thought the applicant was going to be on this evening, but I see that he is not on. I don't know if he's having difficulties, but I can explain the request to the board if that's all right. Is that okay? All right, so as the board or most of you are aware, a 40B comprehensive permit was issued to NBM Realty for property at 152 Main Street back in 2016. After that time, the applicant worked on finalizing the plans and getting everything in order, including their financing and pro forma and things like that, to go forward with getting a building permit. During that time period, they realized that the utility connection fees to the town were somewhere in the area of $200,000 to connect to the water and sewer. So, the applicant met with the Board of Selectmen, or excuse me, Town Administrator, to try to see if there were any way to reduce those fees. As of this time, there has not been an agreement to reduce the fees, although I believe the town is willing to work with the applicant. However, they feel that to make this project work financially, they need to downsize the proposal now, and that they won't be able to build as many units as initially thought, largely based on construction cost and the tie-in cost for the utilities. So, I've been in discussions with town council as to the appropriate steps to take to modify that permit, and since we were coming up on the expiration of the permit of June 30th of this, of 2021, Attorney Eichman suggested that we have the applicant apply for an extension, have the board extend the existing permit, give them time to modify the plans, and give us a little more time to try to work out the sewer connection issues, and then this board will actually have to hold a new public hearing. So, depending on what changes, there potentially is the need for a new peer review if, say, the stormwater management system changes or anything of that nature. So, it will be another public hearing process through this board. So, I believe this is Matt. Matt, is this you?
Yeah, I apologize, I haven't connected the issue.
That's okay, I just explained the proposal to the board. Let me just update your name. All right, so as I was saying, this could necessitate the need for additional peer review once the plans come in, and then we'll notify the abutters again and hold a public hearing to modify the comprehensive permit that was granted. So, I would agree with town council that this is kind of the prudent step to take, and I would recommend that you grant an extension of time for one year until June 9th, 2022, which is one year from the extension that you've already granted to June 9th, 2021. And as you can hear, Matt is now on the line, if you have any questions for him.
Does anybody?
Oh, this is Matt Stane Lamont?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi. It's been a long time with a hard project. That's why I would never want to be chair again, let me tell you. Is there any idea of what they will reduce the amount of units to?
I don't think.
I believe, I believe we're aiming for maybe around like a 20-unit project, but it depends on when our architect draws the plan, then we get together with our engineer, but that's the goal right now.
Well, I didn't hear what you said. 20?
Around that, yeah.
So, that would be down to 77 from 97, is that correct?
No, we're reducing the total amount of new units to around 20, just building.
No, let me get some. The amount that we approved was 97.
Yes.
Yes, so we're going to take 20 units down? So, that would.
No. We'll decrease the amount of units we're going, we're proposing to build to around 20.
All the way down to 20?
Yes.
Originally, it was 103, and we're down to 20?
Yes.
So, of those, how many are going to be affordable?
I believe, with the additional 12 on site, it would be around eight.
You're leaving the call on site?
Yes.
All right, so the two apartments are going to stay the same, the two apartment buildings that are there now?
Yeah, and the whole type of property would receive a face lift, the siding would all be whatever color we decide with the new ones.
Okay, so we have the original of 97 going down to 20, plus there's, if I remember correctly, there were six apartments in each of the two buildings. So, that's 12. So, we're talking 32. But of those 12, they were not 40B.
Yes, but in order to move forward with the 40Bs, those will be incorporated, so the 25%.
All right, so 25% of that now. So, we're down to eight affordable. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, now, Jean. All right, thank you, Matt. My question for you is, where are we at now percentage-wise of affordable houses in Sturbridge?
About 5.63%.
Because of the increase in house buildings and everything, we're back down to 5.6.
Approximately, yes.
Okay. I don't know why this wasn't negotiated earlier. I suggested it, but what could I say? All right. So much for that. Thank you very much, Matt, I clarified it.
You have no questions?
Any, did you have a question?
Basically, Liz, yeah.
Do you have any questions, Tom?
What's the timeline for the next meeting, the new plans you're coming up with?
I would think we'll be able to finalize the next. I would think we'll be able to finalize the plans within the next three months.
Thank you.
Fidelis, do you have any questions?
I have, I have a question, but not from Matt. So is there any way to avoid, you know, it's like, are they going to have to start from scratch in terms of public hearings and, you know, all that stuff? Go through the entire process? Or are there aspects of what we did before that kind of get grandfathered in and, you know?
Yeah, so once Matt has the final plans, I would suggest that he come in with his engineer and we look at the plans. He's using Graves Engineering. And we'll see what has changed from the original to the proposed. And I'm guessing that stormwater management will have to be peer reviewed again because I'm assuming that will change drastically. But the architecture, we shouldn't have to review that again, that's already been reviewed. I'm assuming they'll use this, you know, the same architectural style that was already approved. The landscaping and the play areas will be moved, but use the same type of elements. So the review should be easier this time. I mean, we've already been through a much larger project and this is actually reducing the number of units. So I would hope that we can, you know, instead of rushing to schedule the public hearing, maybe we get the peer review done first and have one public hearing and hopefully just conclude everything in one night instead of many, many meetings like we did before.
I have another question. Matt, maybe you can answer it. How does this affect now the pro formas?
We don't have the pro formas, they haven't been provided to.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying, once it's completed, you know?
Well, I mean, in which way?
Well, you know, before, you had to be down to like twenty percent of, you know, prove that on the pro forma, you know?
We didn't require the pro forma, that was not reviewed as part of the approval. Judy had advised us that something.
Yeah, but they did have, yeah, they were changed, but it did, it did come up in almost every discussion when there were major changes.
But they were never provided, the pro formas were never provided to the.
No, never provided to us, but according to the comprehensive permit, we know that what the restriction is. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Mike, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
David, do you?
No, I do not.
I have one question. So there were three, going to be three new buildings. So are there's only, is there only going to be one new building?
Yes, the idea is to put the one new building in the back of the existing buildings and potentially moving the open space up front where it's already. It's already a form of an open space, that it is.
So naturally, it's going to affect all of the parking areas, which if I remember correctly, were like a hundred and fifty-seven. This was such a.
Yeah, with the new plan, we'll have two parking spots per unit, which I believe where we were at around one point six would be ninety-seven units.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, then they'll have to file with Conservation again as well because it will be a change.
All right, any other questions or discussion? No, seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I made, I'll make.
You go right ahead.
I made the motion to grant an extension of time to commence construction for a one-year period until June ninth, two thousand twenty-two to N B M Realty with a comprehensive permit at one fifty-two Main Street.
Do we have a second? Okay, you have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, Matt, you have your extension.
Hello to the family.
Good luck.
I will, and thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Good night. Okay. I guess the next in order of business is reorganization of the board?
Yeah. I can do that for you.
Okay.
All right. So do we have any nominations for Chair?
I'll nominate Liz Banks. Continue as Chair.
It's been moved to nominate Liz Banks to continue as Chair. Is there a second?
I second.
Do we have any other nominations for Chair?
Only because, especially with this coming up, I'm going to nominate Diane because she had the, she was on board in the office, so she was able to see what was transpiring in the office and dealing with the people in the office. So it's a tough job and Liz has done an excellent job. But because we're dealing with some serious stuff again now, for that reason, I will nominate Diane.
Okay, is there a second?
And only because I think it has nothing to do. I think Liz has done an excellent job and she's done it for a while. But I think every now and then, it's, it should be changed, you know? I've always felt that way, that after every several years, it should be changed, you know?
Okay, so we have a motion to nominate Diane Trapasso as Chair. Is there a second to that nomination?
Are our candidates willing to accept the position as Chair? Both?
Me, yes.
You're both willing to accept, okay.
Yeah, that would, that's a good thing.
That's a good question, I thought.
Good question. We didn't ask if they're willing. So Liz, are you willing to accept?
Yes.
Yes, she said she would, yes.
Oh, I understand. And Diane said yes.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second on nomination of Liz Banks for Chair. We have a motion on nomination of Diane Trapasso for Chair. Is there a second to that? All right, seeing none. There's a motion and a second to nominate Liz Banks for Chair. All those in favor?
Do it.
Do I vote for myself?
You can.
Yes, of course.
I can't see everybody's hand. Was that unanimous?
Seven, six.
Okay, all right. And then I will now take nominations for the position of Clerk, who will also fill, read the legal notices and the agendas and also fill in in the absence of the Chair.
So what is it, Vice Chair and Clerk?
Yes.
Which, there's always been a discussion of which comes first and which comes second.
It's one position, so.
Yeah, I know, Vice Chair slash Clerk, or Clerk slash Vice Chair.
Vice Chair slash Clerk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So is there a nomination for Vice Chair slash Clerk?
I'd like to nominate Diane Trapasso.
Okay. Motion to nominate Diane Trapasso as Vice Chair slash Clerk. Is there?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Michael Young. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair slash Clerk? Seeing none, are we, are you willing to accept that position?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor of Diane Trapasso as Vice Chair slash Clerk? Please raise your hand. Unanimous.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you, congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Is there any old business? No? New business? No? Seeing none, someone can make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Somebody want a second there?
Second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Okay, Fidelis, you got it.
It was really nice to see everybody in person after a very long period of time.
Yeah, it is truly nice to be out again.